Happy New Year and welcome to the January Carmichael School Board Workshop. We appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedules. Small crowd, we're glad you're here. You may notice a new face up here on the board. We have Ms. Kathy Freed with us. We had our January 8th reorganizational meeting and Kathy and Tricia took their oath of office and so they are joining us for another four years, so we're very excited. And with that, Mrs. Freed, would you like to take attendance?
Present and we have a call.
Excellent. Next, we'll go to the Pledge of Allegiance and we have Dr. Dudley who will be joining us for the pledge. First on our agenda is consent. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. At this time, I'll request a motion to suspend the School Board of Trustees meeting for the purpose of convening the Carmichael School Board of Finance meeting. Do I have a motion?
I move to suspend the meeting at this point to have the Board of Finance Organization meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Mr. McMichael, would you provide the board with some background information regarding the Board of Finance?
I will. First, an organization as a Board of Finance is a requirement under Indiana statute for the Board to organize itself as a Board of Finance. After you do that, however, there's very little for the Board of Finance to do. In fact, the only thing that we routinely do is for the Board to accept the report of investments which is included in your report. As a Board of School Trustees, you can elect any members you choose to be your officers of the Board of Finance. We typically recommend that you have the same officers for your Board of Finance as you do for your school board.
Okay, then the first action for the Board of Finance is to appoint a president and a secretary. The administration is recommending that the president and secretary of the school board also serve as president and secretary of the Board of Finance. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next. Well, it says it's on, but I... Thank you. Hello? Oh, yes. That's why I moved it closer and closer. Okay. Next, I'll have Mr. McMichael present the report of investments for 2012 and to present information regarding the Board's investment program.
Thank you. Thank you. First, with regard to our investment program, all of our, all the school district funds are constantly invested, although, as you know, currently the rate of investment is very minimal. But we do keep all of our funds invested. They're either in an interest-bearing checking accounts or they go into what's referred to as repurchase agreements, which really is overnight certificates of deposit. In Indiana, the only, the investment procedures are very conservative. We can, a school district can only invest in government-backed securities, which is essentially certificates of deposit, and those repurchase agreements. And so with the very conservative investment, along with the very minimal interest rates currently, you can see from your report that our total investment earnings this past year were just a little over $79,000. Now, to put that in perspective, I remember a time not too long ago that our investments would run about $1.5 million. So we're certainly like everybody else suffering from interest rates these days as it relates to investments.
Thank you. And our final action item is for the Board to approve the public depositories. Mr. McMichael's provided a list of all qualified depositories.
Yes.
So may I have a motion to accept these depositories?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Seeing that there's no other business for the Board of Finance, may I have a motion to adjourn the Board of Finance meeting?
So moved to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic. At this time, we'll reconvene the meeting of the Carmichael School Board of Trustees. And with that, we go to Mr. McMichael. Our first action item is a temporary transfer of funds.
Thank you. This recommendation is for the Board to adopt a resolution which would allow for the temporary transfer of funds from the Debt Service Fund to the Pension Bond Fund. The 2012 Pension Bond Fund experienced a levy shortfall of $153,000. This was due to a couple of reasons. One is, is that the Department of Local Government Finance overstated our two and a half, I'm sorry, our 2011 pension bond levy, and then we received only 98.8% of our 2012 levy, and those combined resulted in this shortfall. Now, we're further asking that the resolution be identified as a temporary loan that would provide for an emergency inter-fund transfer. And the term "emergency" is not quite as desperate as it may sound. By declaring that this is an emergency situation, it simply allows for the school district to repay this loan in 2013. Otherwise, any inter-fund loans by law must be repaid during the same calendar year that they're taken. So a more typical situation would be is that we, from month to month, in fact, in your consent item, you approved us doing this, for month to month, we will do inter-fund loans for cash flow purposes because since our, many of our funds are funded with property tax, and of course, we receive the majority of that money just twice a year, and the expenses are more consistent throughout the year, so it's not unusual that we will borrow money from one fund to the other throughout the year. But those are all repaid by December 31st, as is required by statute. In this case, because we were unaware of this shortfall essentially until the end of 2012, because you don't finally know what your collections are going to be, we will need to borrow the money in 2013 and also repay it in '13 because even under these conditions, it must be repaid within six months of the following year. So the process itself is rather routine. The shortfall is unfortunate. Really, there was nothing that could have been done to avoid it. But it requires a resolution on your part, and then finally, it's approved by the Department of Local Government Finance.
Okay, so we have a resolution to temporarily transfer funds from our Debt Service Fund to the Pension Fund. May I have a motion to approve that resolution?
I so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. A second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Phillips?
Roger, just to be clear, that there's no long-term impact for this? This is a temporary emergency transfer and the funds will eventually flow back?
Yes, it's a relatively small amount in the context of our operating balance in our Debt Service Fund, which is several million dollars. So it really has no ultimate impact.
Any other discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Next, we turn to Ms. Dr. Dillon, that is, to discuss the Extended School Enrichment Program.
Good evening, members of the Board. Thank you very much for this opportunity. About a month ago, if you remember, we had a presentation by our friends from Carmel Parks Department about our before and after-school program. And just to remind you, not that I need to, we're very, very pleased with that relationship. It provides us a wonderful program, excellent care for our students before and after school, and a reminder to everybody, they are our contracted service provider. We could choose to do that program ourself. Instead, we have a relationship with the Carmel Parks Department. We have in our contract with them a one-year extension that automatically rolls over from year to year if we don't do anything about it. But we brought to you a month ago a recommendation to enter into a three-year agreement with the Parks on that program. That would allow them to do some long-range planning, to reinvest those funds back into our program, and again, all the funds from that program will go back into the program for our kids. And so we brought to you that recommendation. We're asking for your support tonight.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation adopting a three-year program?
I'll move to extend that contract for three additional years.
Second, Mr. Phillips, discussion. Mr. Phillips?
First, just a comment, it's been a real pleasure to see how well the Parks and the school district have worked together, and it's just an ongoing pattern where the schools have worked closely and positively with other agencies, including the Police Department and the Public Library, one of my favorites. So it's just a good thing for the community all together to see this kind of cooperation. Dr. Dillon, I did want to ask, would it be possible to have an annual update to that survey? It was very impressive to see how satisfied our parents were. I'd like to see that sort of thing periodically, if that's at all possible.
Absolutely. That is one of the requirements of our contracted agreement, is that they constantly survey the parents to make sure that they are happy with the services provided. So the data is already there and available. We'll just ask our friends at the Parks to come each year and make that an annual event for us.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes?
Just, I'd like to add, just from my time back on the Parks, in response to what Greg said, I believe from the start, they surveyed the parents within the first couple of weeks or so of each school year and then towards the end. So you even are able to compare at two different points in the year. So that's been really nice to follow when you're on the Parks Board.
Let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Thank you very much, Dr. Dillon. Next, we have the selection of the Superintendent Search Firm, and Mrs. Hackett is going to be presenting that material.
Thanks, Leila. Superintendent Jeff Swenson informed the Board of Education on our December meeting, December 17th last year, that he'd be stepping down from this position as of June 30th, 2013. Dr. Swenson has been and is an innovative leader of students and his fellow educators and really of our community. The school board recognizes that one of its most important duties is the hiring of a superintendent. With this in mind, as Leila mentioned earlier, our new board members took their oath last Tuesday at 7:00 a.m., and a little over an hour later, we were meeting and training on this superintendent search. So I'd say that's pretty quick turnover, pretty focused discussion there. The Board agreed that I'll serve as the point person of the liaison during this process, and Mr. Phillips will assist. We intend to provide regular updates at our board meetings. In addition, at key times during this process, it really would be more effective to utilize school messenger and email. So if you're in the community watching, you know, keep that in mind, too. The Board's goal is to complete this process for a smooth transition to a new superintendent by July 1st of this year, 2013. As you all know, on the Board, five different options for conducting the superintendent search were explored by our Board. And I'd like you to just recall for a moment, the Board worked with the National Search Firm of BWP and Associates during our 2009 superintendent search. And our Board and our community, I'd have to say, in my opinion, benefited greatly from this experience, this professionalism, and this insight of this partnership that we utilized. It's because of this recent and positive experience that I'm confident to recommend the hiring of BWP and Associates for $16,000 plus expenses to assist in this 2013 superintendent search. The process used will be closely, will closely mirror that of three years ago, including stakeholder input into a leadership profile while we ensure the confidentiality of all of our candidates, because that's very important, too. In addition, this year, a superintendent search website will be utilized to keep our community informed of the process, of the timeline, and the ways that they can be involved in this, in the process at appropriate times. This website can be accessed directly from the district's homepage under Hot Topics. So with that, I would like to add to my recommendation and make a motion to hire BWP and Associates under the terms I just laid out for the 2013 superintendent search.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I would happily second that.
Mr. Phillips, excellent. Do we have discussion? Mr. Phillips?
Yes, I'd just like to add to Tricia's excellent remarks that this firm, as she noted, had extensive experience with this Board. They were the firm that helped us to find Dr. Swenson actually three years ago. And since that time, we've worked very closely with Dr. Ron Barnes. He has earned the trust of this group and of this corporation. It should be noted that that firm, Dr. Barnes' firm, was selected on the basis of an extended search among all such firms three years ago. So he's been vetted in the marketplace, and he's been vetted in the very direct experience of this Board on multiple occasions since that time. So I think it's an excellent choice, and it will, again, serve this community very well.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Nows?
Yes, Ron Barnes has also led several workshops that we have had since I've been on the Board, and I think he's very aware of our corporation, is very knowledgeable on who we are as a Board and our expectations, and he's been very involved in our training. So I think he is very, comes highly recommended for this position.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, then we're ready to take a vote. All in favor of supporting using BWP?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. And thank you very much, Tricia, Mrs. Hackett, and Mr. Phillips for coordinating this for us. With that, we move on to discussion. And Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. This evening, I, for discussion, I have a recommendation with regard to support staff, salary, and benefit schedules. You can see from your report that there are, I've identified four goals that we were trying to accomplish, and then I've identified 14 different changes, which are the major changes relative to these schedules. Mrs. Nows and I met over this last week, and it only took us about two and a half hours to go through this, so I'm sure I can get through it in at least two hours this evening. Seriously, I don't think it'll take that long. And while there are a number of changes, several of these apply to all the various groups. This proposal impacts about 865 employees in about, in numerous different jobs, as you know, everything from custodial staff to instructional assistants to food service employees and so forth. I want to begin by saying that the proposal that we're making is not in any way an attempt to save money or to reduce cost in this area. Rather, it's an effort to, in some cases, to, in many cases, to benefit our employees in a more consistent basis, and also to make our salary schedules and I believe our benefit schedules more attractive in the marketplace. So in the end, I believe that these proposals will result, on the district's employer's side, in a more attractive benefit schedules. On the employee's side, there will be a number of employees that will have benefits that are consistent with what other employees in similarly situated already have, and I believe that many, if not most of our employees will feel that there's more fairness associated with these proposals. So I'll begin by identifying the first goal was to improve the continuity of our salary schedules. A couple of examples. We have instructional assistants, for example, with six paid days off, four sick days and two personal days, and yet food service employees have four days off, and they work essentially the same schedule they work when students are here. And so one group has a third more days off than the other group, and given the nature of the food service employees working around food and so forth, you might expect that might be the opposite because, as is often pointed out, we certainly don't want food service employees that are ill coming to work and so forth. And so that's one example. Another is in our area of many of our 12-month employees. Our custodial staff, for example, their vacation days, they receive 10 days when they're first employed. After 10 years, they receive 15 days, another week at 10 years, another week at 15 years, and yet another week at 20 years. So after 20 years, they're up to 25 days vacation. All the other 12-month employees that start out with 10 vacation days also get a week at 10 years, but then that's the most they ever get. So a maintenance employee, for example, who's here 25 years, receiving three weeks of vacation, a custodian that's here for 25 years receives 25 days of vacation. So those are just two examples of where we're trying to be, again, systematic and systemic, and we've taken a step back and said, why is one employer, would we have some of these things? And so, and of course, our employees do the same thing. Believe me, you hear from time to time, why does so-and-so get this much vacation and I only get this much, or this many sick days, and so forth? So we're trying to make those things more consistent. Secondly, then, we currently have, I believe, 14 different salary schedules for various employees, and several of them are within pennies of each other. And can't tell you, there is some reasons as to how we got to where we're at, but I won't belabor the point. And so in three or four cases, we're proposing to consolidate those schedules, and then what we would do is wherever the, whatever the salary of the employee, we would move them to the schedule that's very similar to theirs, at a salary rate that's very, as close as we can get to their current salary. Most of those employees will experience literally less than 10 cents difference either, and there'll be at least as many receive 10 cents more or some portion of that as those that would receive any pennies less. So very, very, very minimal difference, but we can consolidate those schedules. That does two things. One, it just, it simplifies some of the bureaucracy. But it also, from the employee's perspective, we, many of our employees say, well, why am I paid this much or on this schedule and have these benefits? The example, the food service and the instructional assistant, for example, when they can see that they're in a very similar situation, not in terms of the work that they do, but in terms of the hours that they work, the schedule they work, and so forth. And so I believe some of this consolidation will also result in our employees feeling that they're more part of the group and they're not out here separate. Fact is, is that food service and transportation, 30 years ago, were operated somewhat separately from the rest of the school district. And you can, I can see that reflected in some of our benefit schedules and some of our salary schedules. So we're trying to accomplish that. A third item is we're proposing to reduce the number of steps on the salary schedule. And this has a positive impact for some employees and frankly, potential for some negative impact. It certainly will be perceived as negative on the part of others. But let me explain. Currently, we, there are 12 steps on the schedule. It's really patterned after a teacher's salary schedule. There's not as many steps, but the idea of an incremental step is in place in all of our classified employees' salary schedules. That is entirely because that's the world of teachers and educators. That is not the marketplace, however, for a skilled trades maintenance person or a custodial person. Generally speaking, and in some cases, in the case of the maintenance person, for example, if they're coming out of a skilled trades environment, if you're an electrician, the negotiated salary for electrician is, it's a certain salary, and that's what all the electricians are paid if they're doing the same position. And so the idea that we, in our current schedules, has a 37% spread from the low salary to the high salary. And so to have a 37% differential in pay for two people doing the same job, two classified employees doing the same job, while that's not unusual for teachers, as we know, that's very unusual for a classified employee to have that much spread. It creates a problem for the employees because, again, they'll say, I'm doing the same job as the other person. They may think they actually do a better job than the other person, and yet they may be paid up 37% less money for the same job. The employees don't understand it, our marketplace doesn't understand it. And so when they come to apply for a job, frankly, most employees want to know what's the hourly rate, what's the benefit package, and they really don't, they're not particularly persuaded by how much they're going to make 12 years from now. And so I think it puts us at a disadvantage in terms of how we spend our money in the marketplace, and again, I also think it's somewhat unfair to our employees, and I can tell you that many of them feel that it's unfair as well. The other thing that happens with that is, which is much less so with teachers, and that is that we've always treated those steps as a range, and so we do not strictly put everybody on step one. And so, again, now we have two positions and one person, and frankly, it varies depending on who's in the, you know, the position to make the decisions over the years, but based on outside experience, one person may be put on step six and another person put on step two. And the employees, at least, may be convinced that they have very similar to experience as the other person. So you get, again, that perceived fairness and equity issue comes into play, too. So we're trying to compress the salary schedule and believe that that will have a higher starting salary, so we think that, again, that'll be more attractive in the marketplace. But we are compressing the bottom as well. Now, I'll explain here in a minute, but we are always sensitive to our current situation and our current employees, and so we're not, we're not cutting anybody's salary, we're not freezing anybody's salary, but we are proposing to compress that schedule. And then the fourth goal is to offer an attendance incentive program to all of our classified employees. For a number of years, we have, again, offered an incentive program to some of our employees. Food service is one example, custodians is another, bus drivers, another example. So we have many employees that say, well, you know, why do we not have an opportunity for an incentive program? And I don't really have a good answer for them, other than, you know, there are reasons, but generally not satisfying reasons. And so proposing to offer an incentive, an attendance incentive program for all employees. And the focus here is not on the employees that have unfortunate health circumstances or family circumstances that really is a practical matter precludes them from having very excellent attendance, but rather it focuses on rewarding the employee who's fortunate enough to have good health and so forth and be able to come to work, if not every day, most days. And this is some financial reward if they can manage to do that. Certainly, our employees that are year-round and have vacation benefits, we found from experience with our custodial staff, for example, that in some cases, they will choose to use a vacation day rather than a sick day because they want to preserve that incentive bonus. That's their choice to make, but they have that latitude. Now, not all of our support staff work year-round and have vacation days, but many of them do. And so now, along with that, in some cases, we're also proposing to decrease the number of sick days that they have and the number of personal days, not in all cases. The majority of those 800 and some employees are instructional assistants. They currently have four sick days and two personal days, but no incentive program. The food service, as I mentioned earlier, have a total of four paid days off, and they have an incentive program. So as an example, the proposal for those, almost 600 of those, those are about 600 of the 800 and some employees. With the instructional assistants, we're not proposing to reduce the days off, but we are adding the incentive program. So they, there's no minus to them, they're just gaining the opportunity for the So they, there's no minus to them, they're just gaining the opportunity for the incentive plan. The food service employees already have the incentive plan, but we're actually adding two days for them to make them consistent, again, with the IAs who work the same schedule that they do. Many of the other employees, if not all the other employees, have some reduction in the number of sick or, and PD, professional development days as kind of a trade-off for the opportunity to earn the incentive program. And so, so those are the four major goals, I would say, that we're trying to accomplish. Now, with regard to the major changes. The first is, is I'm recommending that we, that the board discontinue recognizing the Carmel Clay Schools Cafeteria Workers Association. You may not know we have a Cafeteria Workers Association, but we have had over the years. And I'm recommending that you stop recognizing that association as it's really been defunct for a number of years. I mean, literally, I have not met face-to-face with a representative of that association for at least six years. There was a lady that worked here for almost 30 years, I think, that really was a self, somewhat of a self-appointed president, simply because there was not enough apparent interest in doing, being the representative, and so, she would announce that she would be president, nobody objected to it. And so, it all was fine, and, but we really got to the point to where I would call her up and say, this is what we're proposing for all other support staff, this is what I would propose for food service, are you okay with that? And she would generally say yes, and that's how it would work. So, I would submit to you that a majority of our food service employees as well have no idea that there is or was an association. So I am recommending that we not continue with that. There really is nothing in that, in their agreement that they had had that you could distinguish as having benefited them from being represented. I can identify a couple of things that I think was to their disadvantage. One of which was, that's one of only two employee groups that the school district has not paid the employees' contribution toward perf. And the second one is bus drivers, which is the second group that has been organized. So, every other classified employee, you have paid their perf contribution for years and years, but not for food service. A second, and then I've alluded to this earlier, a second change would be the elimination of step one and two on all the salary schedules, which would then move anybody on one and two to what now would be step three. And then, along with that, to also establish step eight as the new, as the top of the salary schedule. Now, eventually, we would renumber the steps, but I don't want to confuse you by changing the numbers at this point. Now, with regard to the compression of the schedule to step eight, I'm also recommending that employees currently on step seven or eight, or nine, or 10, or 11, would continue to move towards step 12. And so, that's giving a two-year window. In other words, somebody on step six, it would be two years before they would have any impact to this because obviously, it would take them two years to get to step eight, and it would only be in the third year that they now would be at the top of the schedule versus moving on. There's an eight and a half, a little over eight and a half percent difference between step 12 and step eight. So certainly, an employee could look at that and say, well, you've now capped my ability, my earnings capability down about eight and a half percent. And that is the difference between those two steps. And this will be more difficult to understand, but what will happen is, over time, because we would have, would not have employees continuing past step eight and receiving an increment and so forth, again, we're not trying to save money here in terms of the group, so the money that would otherwise be going to those increments really will find its way up to the salary schedule, the one through, you know, what would be the one through eight or steps. And so, so those will tend to rise over time, and so, what will really happen is, is that what's now step eight and step 12 will have a way of compressing together themselves. And that's really not speculation. We did this exact same thing, again, we were, as, with bus drivers several years ago. And just this past year, you approved a proposal salary schedule for bus drivers that now has merged what we refer to as the grandfather drivers with everybody else. And so, so this isn't a matter really of speculation, it's just a matter of fact that they will, they will come together over time. And so, they, I don't believe that the, I don't believe that any employee really will be disadvantaged from the salary standpoint, certainly not to the eight and a half percent level. And then, we're proposing to eliminate several schedules. I've noted schedule, what's currently available, is schedule three, schedule five, the custodial salary schedule, and the food service salary schedule. We're then moving those people to another existing schedule, and they would be placed closest to their current salary. So to the employee, they're really not impacted to that. In fact, some employees would gain a little bit because when they're moved to a schedule while it's on their, they're nearest to their current salary, they may be, for example, on step 12 now, that might put them on step 11 of the other schedule, so they might actually have an opportunity to gain another step. But it really isn't of any significance to the employee, or to us for that matter, other than just consolidating the number of schedules. Then I've noted that we're merging two benefit schedules, one we refer to as schedule B and schedule F. The F schedule is the custodial schedule, and that's an example where I alluded to about the vacation time. By bringing those two together, in the one case, we're giving some employees additional vacation days consistent with other employees that are similarly situated. And in the case of these two groups, again, the custodial group has an incentive program, the other employees have not had one, and so, now they would, they would both have an incentive program. There are a couple of changes to two or three people in the educare department, again, moving them to a schedule that reflects their current salary, and then again, including food service on a, on a, a schedule D benefit schedule. And then, we are proposing to eliminate, and this is a more significant change, but again, the final impact of it is really insignificant, but it's important to understand what we're doing, otherwise, the employee may feel they're losing a significant benefit. Because I'm proposing that we, that the board would discontinue paying the employees 3% of their salary share as a contribution into the perf retirement program. And I'm also proposing to discontinue contributing 1% for that, those employees that's currently going into a 401A retirement plan. So that's a total of 4% that's essentially for retirement. Currently, the board pays both of those, the perf part on behalf of the employee. They're paid before taxes. The significance of that is, is when the money goes in before taxes, it's tax-deferred, it's not tax-avoided. And so, when the employee finally retires, if they vest, now, they're vested in the perf from day one, but in the 4, the 1% going into the 401, they either vest in that after they've worked here for 10 years, or in some cases, if they were a part of the buyout program in 2003, they do not vest in that 1% until they're, or unless they're eligible to retire under perf, which means that more than 50% of these employees forfeit that 1% because they either aren't here for 10 years, or they aren't here until they're eligible to retire. And so, so it's 4% going into a retirement program. When they draw it out, depending on the tax bracket, they're going to have to pay taxes on it. So rule of thumb, we generally say if it's 4% going in, it's probably going to be about 3% coming out in terms of net. Now, to offset that loss, I'm also recommending a 4% increase in their salary. Now, that does several things. Number one, the 4% will more than cover their 3% contribution into perf, that they will make on their own behalf, but they, the employee has to make that after taxes. So rule of thumb, it takes 4% more gross income to pay this 3% contribution. And so, we're giving them the 4% to be able to do that. Now, the difference is, is then, when they draw the money out when they retire, it comes out with no taxes because it's already been taxed. And so, so I really think if you say, are you better off to pay taxes while you're working and earning money, or do you want to pay taxes after you retire, and that's maybe the income that you have? And so, I really think the employee will be better off to have this going in after taxes. The board would be giving them sufficient money to make that contribution. And so, in the end, if, even if they don't contribute into a 401, or a 403B, which they could, they can choose to do that if they want to, but in both cases, they're going to net about 3% retirement money. Either the 4% going in is going to come out at 3 after it's taxed, or the 3% that they put in will come out at 3% because it's already been taxed. So that change to the employee will not have a negative financial impact. And for all the employees that otherwise are going to forfeit the 1%, of course, when they give it in salary, they've got it immediately, so they'll actually gain that 1%, the ones that otherwise would have forfeited it. So some employees will be a little better off getting it in salary. Another advantage to the employee is, is that that will, of course, raise their salary by 4%. And so, whether it's, they're applying for a loan, or eventually when they retire, if they retire under perf, if their salary's a direct relationship to their pension, and so, all other things being equal, their pension would be 4% higher with a 4% higher salary than it would be otherwise. So it helps them a little bit at retirement ages well. And so, and then to the, on the employer's side, again, raises the salary by 4%, so now, when we advertise a position, the hourly rate's 4% higher than it would have been otherwise, I believe we get more credit in the marketplace for the hourly rate than we do by saying, well, here's the hourly rate, but we pay this contribution, which they've never heard of at that point. And so, they're comparing our hourly rate to the private sector hourly rate, and I think we're at disadvantage in that respect. So we're making that recommendation. We've split a couple of schedules because, again, one schedule had employees that received perf and some others that didn't, so we, I split that schedules because we increased one of the schedules by 4% and we did not increase the other one by that much. So, so that nobody would get a windfall from that either. Then with regard to vacation days, we currently have 33 employees out of these 865 that receive 25 days of vacation when they're initially hired. And again, there's reasons for that. But after 10 years, they receive another five days. So now, now they're up to 30 days. That seems like a lot of vacation, and it is. It really came from a time where those same employees had three weeks off without pay. And so, spring break and over Christmas primarily. And so, years ago, they were paid on a salary, even though they're hourly employees, and so, in some cases, we were violating wage and hour laws because by paying them even pays, like we do teachers, as opposed to the legal requirement of paying hourly employees within 10 days of the time they've earned the money. So in the course of correcting that, we elected to pay them all the time. And so, basically, what we did was, we said, instead of having two weeks off with, at Christmas without pay, we will lower your hourly rate. We didn't try to trick anybody, but we lowered the hourly rate and then paid them for those days, thus the 25 days vacation. They, they used to have two weeks of vacation, three weeks unpaid, and so, so that's the background. But we thought that 30 days was just excessive, and so, so we're recommending the discontinuation of the additional five days, again, grandfathering those that have the 30 days and grandfathering any employee that's within two years of getting the five days. And then, with regard to all other employees, all employees actually that have vacation time, we're recommending that they be permitted to carry over from one year to the next, a maximum of five vacation days into the next year. This December was a good example. We had two days right after Christmas where employees had signed up to take vacation, two days after, you know, the two days after Christmas, we closed school because of weather conditions. Now, they're either going to carry those days over, or they're going to lose those two days. We have some employees who will hold back vacation time because they're very conscientious and in our benefits department, for example, because of the need to change certain things at the end of the year, and they're not sure how long it's going to take. And so, so we get into these certain situations where it's really in our interest that they not take their vacation, they don't want to lose the vacation, and so, this gives them just a little flexibility to, within, for five days to have some discretion as to whether they use them all in one year or carry them over into the next. Now, they can accumulate them, so they, if they carry over, if they, if they have 10 days and they carry over five days this year, then the next year, they'll either, you know, they can't carry an additional five, so they could never have, carry over, end up with more than five days, more than whatever they would be allotted for that particular year. And so, again, a matter of getting more consistency in what we're doing. And then, other than the incentive program, as I had referred to, a little more specifics about that, with the employees that have, I was going to say vacation, but that's not quite correct. In most cases, what we're saying is, is if the employee does not use any personal or, personal days or sick days in one semester or half a year, then they would receive a financial bonus for that of either $150 or $300. Now, the amounts are dependent upon their, how much they're making, and so, the higher-paid employees, it approximates, it tried to approximate about 2% of their potential income, so, and that's not a real consistent because of all the different schedules that are worked, but, but again, depending on their pay scale, they would, they would be eligible for either $150 per half year if they missed no days, or which, or $300. And so, either 300 or 600 for the year. In the case of, it's benefit schedule C, but it would be, for example, a full-time elementary secretary that works full day during the school year, but does not work in the summer, or does not work all the summer. Therefore, they do not receive vacation days. They would have the same program, except they could miss one day. Because if they, if they are sick, they don't have the choice of using vacation, and they work, in some cases, 200 or even up to 215 days as opposed to 180 student days. So we've, we've been a little bit more liberal on their program, and they would, if they missed one day, they would still receive the full incentive. And if they missed, and the other employees, if they missed one day, they would still receive half the amount, so that even if they missed one day per semester. And so, so that's essentially what the incentive program would consist of, and it's really patterned after the ones we already have for two or three of our employee groups. And so, with that, we're recommending no step increases or salary schedule increases at this time. So again, these changes were not focused on the, kind of the annual adjustment to salary and so forth, but rather, some consolidation and creating some consistency. So, that's my report.
Thank you very much for your thorough, thorough explanation for each of those areas that you were addressing. Right now, we'll open it up for discussion. So, questions?
Yes. I would just like to add that when we had our discussion and we talked about the perf contribution, that later on, when, when a person retires, they don't know what the tax rate will be
That's right.
At that point, but they do know what the tax rate is at the time they are, during, when they get their salary.
That's correct.
And the other thing is, you, the employer will, we will continue to take that deduction out of their paycheck.
Oh, yes.
The employee doesn't pay for that on their
No, they don't literally pay.
Yeah.
It's just a required deduction, it's, it's really treated the same as state and federal taxes, it's just something that
Right.
You're, it's taken out, kind of whether you like it or not, it's not optional. I should mention with, one other thing with regard to that 401A, nothing happens to the money that's in there. I mean, there's a vesting schedule, the board would just stop contributing to it. But the employee that has those funds would continue to have them, and if they vest in them, and we're not changing the vesting or anything else, so the only thing that changed So, the only thing that changes is we would just stop contributing into the fund.
Other questions?
Oh, I was just going to say, I think another benefit of having the consolidated steps is we have a high turnover rate as well. So, some people don't ever get to Step 12. So, we're going to be able to give them the benefit of having a higher salary lower on in the salary schedule.
Well over 50%, in fact, as a group, the employees do not get even close to Step 12. Some groups have much higher turnover than others. But we take instructional assistants, for example, as the board knows. Many of our instructional assistants are licensed teachers. They're taking these jobs. They're hoping to, and many of them do, get a teaching position, either with us or with somebody else. So, there certainly are some that have been here for years and years and are very valuable employees. But there are a number of those that are not seeing that as a career position.
Mrs. Hackett?
Yeah, Roger, I appreciate the whole consolidation and being more systematic and fair across the board. I do have a question. When you get down to the minute employee, as we merge schedules and you said some, and the employee will get the closest rate of pay on the other schedule that they're being merged with or whatever, some will be in an advantage and some will be in a disadvantage? That's where I'm worried about, those ones that get disadvantaged?
Yes. I don't know this exact, I didn't look to be 100% sure, but the vast, vast majority of employees, if they're losing, if their rate drops at all, it will drop less than 10 cents. Okay? So, per hour, I'm sorry. Per hour. So, I can think of one, for example, that we just looked at this afternoon, and the salary was like $12.26 an hour. They would be going to $12.30 an hour because on the schedule that I'm trying to put them on, that was the closest to the $12.26. If they got, there's about a 2% to 2.5% difference from one step to the next. So, they're going to be somewhere, you know, either, if they're very close to the next step, we just put them on the next step.
So, I'm just worried individually about those ones that are going from $10.25 to $10.20.
Yes.
Are we at a lot of those?
No. Well, lots of relative term.
It doesn't matter unless it's you.
Yeah, I don't know the exact number. But what I did was I looked at those and said, "Okay, what impact?" And realizing every dollar counts. And so, what impact does this make to this employee? And so, and some of it depends if they're working three hours a day, for example, and 180 days a year, then if they're losing 4 cents an hour, based on that number of hours, they might be losing $15 a year. If they were losing 9 cents or 12 cents, and they work eight hours a day, 12 months a year, then, you know, then it's relative. But I mean, in actual dollars, it adds up to a lot more. And so, in the second example, I'd likely put them on a step where they actually gained a little bit rather than lost.
So, each of those situations are looked at? That's what you're saying?
Yes. We're looking at, literally looking at each one of them. Now, it's not each person because there's 12 steps. So, I mean, you know, once we say this Step 10 is going over here to Step 11, then once we, you know, watch the spread, and then we make the decision. So, there may be 50 people on that same step, but we're looking at each, we are looking at each one individually. I really don't think that'll be an issue with the employees between, because those same employees may also be getting two more weeks of vacation. They may, if they're an employee that's getting PERF and receiving the 4% increase in salary, because that increase is after we make these other changes. I mean, it's a net increase, if you will. That may more than offset the few pennies that they could be losing based on the step that they were put on.
Okay.
I really don't anticipate that being a problem for employees.
Okay. That takes me to just one other question in that, how are we communicating?
To the employees?
Yeah.
Yeah. Good question. Whenever we make any changes, whether it's this or a salary proposal, just a normal kind of salary increase and so forth, there's always a question, "Do you share with the employees first, or do you share with the school board first?" I generally choose to share with you first. If I had gone out and tried to explain all this to 865 employees, you would be getting a few phone calls, would be my guess. And then, and you would go, "I don't know anything about this." So, I thought it was easier to share this with five people who, at the moment, may not understand all of it before I share it with 865 employees that may not understand all of it either. So, as early as tomorrow morning now, we'll begin to share with the employees and as well as our principals and so forth. And we will, they'll have an opportunity certainly to ask their principal any follow-up questions. They'll call here, certainly they can call here, but sometimes it's easier to walk down the hall to somebody they work with every day and so forth. But we will immediately start sharing the proposal because, again, we're not asking you to act on this this evening. But we'll share this information with, starting tomorrow, and probably take tomorrow and Wednesday to get that accomplished. And then, the employees, like yourself, will have a couple of weeks to think, you know, have questions and whatever. But we'll start that sharing process tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you, Lila.
Thank you, Lila. First of all, Roger, it seems like a very attractive package to me. On the one hand, administratively, it looks as though we're cleaning up a number of inconsistencies. And for the employee, it sounds like it's fair, and it's going to give the employee a good deal more predictability. A lot of that uncertainty as to where do I stand? It depends on exactly which category you're in. That goes away, and I think it's better for everybody. Having said that, I think Tricia's last question is one I'd hoped to have to myself, but she beat me to it.
[laughing]
So, we will have a chance to, of course, have some feedback. Sometimes these things, which seem like wonderful ideas to us, well, you know, we hear from people what they actually think. One thing that, I'm not sure that I heard you mention this, I would like to understand. If this package survives as a whole, which I expect it probably will, will Carmel Clay Schools be at a relative advantage vis-à-vis other districts or disadvantage? Or how do we stack up against our fellow districts after this proposal?
Well, before and after, I think we stack up very well.
Okay.
But I, as I said earlier, I believe that many of the proposed changes will make us more competitive than we already are in the marketplace. As an example, our average salary for custodial workers is just about $15 an hour. But our beginning salary, I don't have it here in front of me, but our beginning salary can be around $11. And so, but then the top salary is 37% more than that or about $17. And so, you know, you'll track different people from $11 for the same job versus $17 or $15. And so, it's like, well, you know, our cost is averaging about 15, but the offer may be 11. But if they stay here for 12 years, they might make 17. That's all based, of course, it'll get raises over the years, but on the current salary schedule. And so, to that employee, I believe that the vast majority of them, when they say, "What's your hourly rate?", and we say, "Well, it's this 12-step schedule. Well, where would I start? Well, it might be $11." If somebody else says, and in fact, most of these employees in the marketplace, there is no concept of an incremental schedule. They simply are told, "We pay $15 an hour, $14 an hour, whatever it is. Well, what will I make 12 years from now?" They would just laugh at them and say, "Well, I have no idea what you'll make in 12 years, but this is what you make." And we generally give a cost of living increase and so forth. That's what's consistent out there. And I think the closer we get to that, the more competitive we will be, not just with other school districts either, by the way, because many of our employees, of course, you know, come from private sector, not just another school.
I would like to follow up on that point about compressing the schedule. Was it a consideration to just simply not continue with any schedule or any step system?
Yeah.
Or why did we choose to compress instead of eliminate?
The answer is yes. I could personally be okay with no salary schedule, but rather an hourly rate. But knowing where we're at now, trying to, you know, and so, we're kind of, I'm not saying we're moving toward that. But frankly, I would intend to recommend maybe another, elimination of another step or two in the future to maybe have a three or four-step schedule. Because I could be okay with just an hourly rate. At the same time, I think to have a much more compressed schedule and to tell a new employee, "This is what we, this is our starting pay." And there is a learning curve, certainly, for our positions. And an employee is not as valuable the first day they walk in as they will be, but I don't think it takes 12 years for them to catch on. So, if it does, we've got other kinds of problems. So, but it does take a while. So, I could see us, you know, compressing it even more than it is. And I'm not talking about taking more off of the high end of the schedule, though, so as to not, you know, create any more anxiety. But as far as trying to improve even further the beginning salary schedule. And so, it's a matter of, you know, where we're at. If we were starting all over, we might be just recommending, you know, an hourly rate. But I think at this point, given, you know, we are an existing operation, and there is some rationale for saying you would have some growth in the same job. But if the spread, if you will, for the same job is more like 10% rather than almost 40%, that makes a lot more sense to me. And I think it makes a lot more sense to the prospective employees as well.
Thank you.
One more.
Okay. I was just wondering, do we have any idea of how many people we're talking about right now to be grandfathered?
Not exactly, but it'll be a sizable number. Just in looking at the numbers, I didn't add them up specifically, but, and I've been kind of working on this for a number of weeks. But I would estimate it's between 35% to 40%.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes?
I don't really want to surprise you with this question or anything, but it just hit me. Do we have an estimate of the total cost for doing this? Is it an increase to the system, a decrease?
I don't have an, I didn't estimate a cost because I don't anticipate there will be a material difference in cost. Again, there may be a little, I'm speculating a little bit because the 1% contribution into the 401A, for example, we know that many employees forfeit that. We give it in salary. None of them will forfeit it. So, there's a slight increase there. On the other hand, when we, if we stop at Step 8, in the short run, you know, that may save a little money on that piece of it. The vacation time, for example, there's no additional cost there. We will have loss of labor in a sense if somebody gets another week of vacation, but we're already paying them either way, as to whether they work or not. Likewise, with the incentive program, we have, well, we would be, we'll be paying some people some incentive money for attendance. If that reduces absenteeism, not only will we benefit from their efforts being on the job, but in many cases, we will avoid a substitute cost. And so, there's some offset there. But I would say that there is not a, any kind of significant additional cost here. And certainly, the focus wasn't on trying to increase the cost at this point.
Okay. Looks like we've covered most of our questions now. I would encourage you, if you have any additional questions or things pop up between now and our next meeting, by all means, give Roger a call or an email and move on from there. And with that, we'll go to Dr. Dudley, who'll be presenting our strategic plan update. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. This evening, I will give you an update on our strategic plan. And as you will recall, on September 24th, at our board meeting, the board approved the Carmel Clay Schools strategic plan that we developed last year. And the purpose of a strategic plan, when we looked at developing that, was to really give our district a focus on where we needed to go to set, to help set our priorities, and then also to look at, provide an outline of how we might allocate those resources. As you'll recall, this should look familiar, but our graphic organizer for our strategic plan, as you can see, our mission is outlined here, and our student achievement goal, what we want all of our students, when they graduate from Carmel Clay Schools, is to be college and career-ready. And through that, we have very specific indicators, measures, and targets. And how we're going about that is through three sub-goals. And those sub-goals, we'll talk more about, and the progress that we've made so far on those sub-goals. So, our first sub-goal was to provide students with a differentiated learning opportunities in order to be responsive to the needs of our students. And under each of those sub-goals, we have very specific strategies on how we'll go about doing those. We have our expected outcomes. And then also, we have monitoring tools that will help us to know how we're moving towards those expected outcomes, where we're moving. And so, our first sub-goal, or our first strategy, develop curriculum for all courses that is rigorous and aligned with the Common Core State standards. Our completed curriculum maps, one of our outcomes from this sub-goal is looking at those curriculum maps. Well, our completed curriculum maps that are aligned with our Common Core standards, as you see here, is our math curriculum maps, our K-2 literacy, our 6 through 11 literacy, and our early childhood. Those are all completed. In progress currently this year are our 3 through 5 literacy, our 2-3 GT, 4-5 GT, our FAP, life skills, and our FIAZ programs. Those are complete, those are in progress. And then, as you can see, we have a long list of next steps to align that curriculum with the Common Core State standards. And so, obviously, we focused, we started our focus on the math and the literacy, and we still have a long list to continue with that. Our next strategy is to implement the written curriculum with fidelity. And in this piece, as we looked at monitoring tools, some of our monitoring tools we looked at was our PD tracker. And our PD tracker is a tool that we have that really looks at the professional development that we're offering at a district level. So, let me remind you, these numbers here, these are at a district level. They do not include what we're doing at the school level, which we also have very intensive professional development. But when we're looking at the specific curriculum piece and implementing that curriculum with fidelity, in our PD tracker thus far this semester, this first semester, we had 91 different professional development opportunities that related to that curriculum implementation and for a total of 321.5 hours. And so, that, as we looked at the different opportunities that we had, these opportunities range from everything from a whole group workshop types of settings, helping teachers to really understand the different materials that they had available to them, how to use those materials, all the way down to individualized co-planning or individualized demonstration lessons in classrooms. So, as you'll recall, last spring, we did a workshop on professional development and the different types of that differentiated job-embedded professional development. And so, as we talk about professional development, we are talking about a large continuum of those professional developments. Some of the next steps, we want to continue to provide that job-embedded professional development. And then also, we want to make sure we're continuing to monitor that curriculum implementation through our Carmel RISE process. As you'll recall, one of our, another one of our monitoring tools is really looking at the specific indicators in Carmel RISE that relate to the different strategies in place. I did not want to pull, we have that data, but it's, because we've only been one semester and Carmel RISE is very new, I didn't feel like it was a good data tool as of yet. We need to collect more data from that piece, but we'll continue there. But another one of our monitoring tools is our exit slips. And these are just some examples of what is that impact on instruction when we're talking about implementing that written curriculum. So, these exit slips were exit slips that teachers completed after different professional development opportunities. And this is just a sampling of some of those. And as you can see from the information up there, we have, you know, some comments on really informing guided reading groups to implementing math workshop, to looking at using the effective use of reading conferences, and also launching science notebooks. And this is a variety of kindergarten through 12th grade comments from different teachers on that impact. So, our next strategy is utilize evidence-based practices for instruction. And again, And again, the professional development opportunities here, we looked at these professional development opportunities offered, and it, again, it's a large continuum of those different opportunities. But we had 228 different professional development opportunities related to evidence-based practices, with, for a total of 792 hours. And again, our next step is to continue that job embedded professional development and to continue to monitor the utilization of those evidence-based practices. And some of the exit slips that have to do with the evidence-based practices, as you can see, we have a wide range from those exit slips of integrating technology, of grouping different students, using inquiry circles, um, you know, you, having the opportunity for demonstration of working with students with behavior modification, working with students on how to better express emotions. So we're looking at a wide variety of how do we implement those best practices in the classroom and how are they impacting the classroom? So our next sub-goal, as we look at our strategic plan, is to access, analyze, and use student data to inform instruction. And what, as we look at the professional development, and, and again, at the district level, we have 39 professional development opportunities, um, for a total of 139 hours. And we also, from the same time period last year, we have a 20% increase in Pinnacle usage. And as you'll recall, Pinnacle is a tool that we use to help us to really, um, take the data, the data comes in a lot of different forms, to be able to easily have that data at our fingertips and analyze that. And all of our teachers were very much involved in using Pinnacle, especially this first semester, to look at their student data to determine their student learning objectives with our new RISE model. And so again, we want to continue that professional development. And some of the impact on instruction, as you can see, um, from the exit slips, our teachers are, you know, really making some of those database decisions to support what's best for students, um, looking at not only taking that data from the teacher's perspective, but helping students to use that data in the example with the data notebooks, and incorporating those data notebooks for social studies and literacy. And then also, um, looking at how to better meet the needs in the area of fluency by using that data that's very hands-on. Our next strategy is to evaluate and revise programs, supports, and schedules to maximize learning opportunities. And, um, some of the pieces that we're looking at this to, that's in progress currently is currently, we are conducting our literacy program evaluation. And as you'll recall, our, um, program evaluation is a tool that we use for all of our major programs. We have a cycle as we look through that program evaluation. We look at what are those best practices, what's happening in our classroom, and what are those recommendations? Our literacy program evaluation has actually been extended over the last several years because with the adoption of Common Core Standards, we needed to fast-track some of this because our kindergarteners two years ago, they were, we had to start, make, we had to make sure that they, their curriculum is Common Core Standards because they will be the first ones when they're in third grade to, um, be assessed with Common Core. And we wanted to make sure that they had those pieces. So we've done this, um, in smaller chunks than we normally do when we do literacy program evaluation because of our, um, Common Core State Standards. We also are looking, as we look at, um, different programs, we're, um, conducting a counselor-student services program evaluation. Mr. Arthur and Dr. Dylan are, um, working with our counselors, with our student services coordinators, to really look at the programs that we offer as a whole, those support services, and what those need to look like, what does the research say, um, and what recommendations would come from there to look at those programming. Also, um, we're implementing co-teaching models in various classrooms. And at our February workshop, you'll have the opportunity to learn more about those co-teaching, but we have co-teaching models, um, happening in our elementary classrooms and middle school classrooms, and also some very unique co-teaching models in our high school, um, classrooms that are very exciting this year, that's, um, really looking at, how do we best meet the needs of our students in Carmel Clay Schools? And then another piece that we're looking at is revising the literacy intervention delivery models. We're really looking at, especially at the elementary level, how do we best make sure that the interventions that we're providing are, um, it's, um, they're just, our students are receiving that top instruction all day long. And so we're really looking at how we're doing that, the supports that we're putting in place, the professional development we're putting in place, and the interventions that we're using as well. And those pieces, that all goes hand in hand, um, with our literacy program evaluation. So some of our next steps is to look at, at exploring schedule options and also exploring calendar options. And as I say, you know, as I look at these pieces, it, what does the research say about how students learn best? You know, um, some people will cite research that adolescents do better if they start later in the day. Um, you know, and it'd be better to flip our schedules. Right now, our elementary students start later than our high school students. So really exploring that and also exploring calendar options. Many of our neighboring schools are looking at balanced calendars. Is that an option that would best, um, be best for learning? And that's what we're always keeping in mind. So those are exploring those different options. Mr. Dylan is going to, um, work with a COG this, um, second semester to start looking at those calendar options as well. So our next, um, or our final, um, strategy in our, for our first sub-goal is to allocate reso, allocate resources to provide personnel, tools, materials, and professional development opportunities to support differentiating instruction. And again, as we said, the whole purpose of that strategic plan is to really come up with an outline of those, what are those priorities, what, what is the focus, and then how might those resources be allocated? And so this is an overall example of the different professional development, um, opportunities with a total involving 727 staff members for the first semester. So we have been very busy. Our teachers have been, our teachers and staff, and when we say staff members, we're looking at teachers, we're looking at instructional assistants, also administrators in this professional development as we provide that. But everybody has been really, um, engaged in, in that continuous adult learning in order to best meet the needs of our students. And so we want to, um, continue to provide that differentiated instruction and we, and our prof, professional development. And to, what, the way to do that is looking at content area instructional specialists at the secondary level. And when we say content area instructional specialist, we're talking about instructional specialists. And as you'll recall, um, we did a couple different workshops with our instructional specialists and their role that they play in really supporting teachers and looking at providing that differentiated job embedded professional development. But one thing that we've heard from our secondary teachers is, um, we have, in finding a generalist instructional specialist is very difficult because to be able to do everything from language arts to industrial tech requires a lot of different skill sets. So one of the things we, we heard from our secondary teachers especially is, it would be, um, very beneficial if we looked at an instructional specialist that looked maybe at the humanities side, or an instructional specialist that looked more at the technical side, the science, the math, the industrial technology. And not just, their role would be very similar, but it would, they would be better able to support what happens in that classroom because their background would more directly align with what's happening in that classroom. So that's, as we look at those content area instructional specialists, that's what we're talking about. Another next step is, um, looking at adding reading intervention teachers at the elementary level. And this ties back to really looking at our intervention models that we have in place at the elementary. Currently, we have reading intervention teachers at our one Title I school at Orchard Park that we currently, we've had for the last several years. And a, a reading intervention teacher really works with students on providing those high-quality interventions. At our middle school level, we have certified teachers that provide intervention in reading success and also in math success at all three of our middle schools. And then at our high school level, we also have certified teachers that provide intervention in the form of lab classes. We have different lab classes. But at our elementary school, the model currently, right now, the interventions are provided by instructional assistants. And our instructional assistants are fabulous. But one of the things, and Mr. McMichael alluded to this earlier, we have a very high turnover rate. Many of our instructional assistants were fortunate that they are certified teachers. However, they get teaching jobs because they are so good. And one of, so one of the issues that we have is we have, um, we have a disconnect because we constantly are bringing in new instructional assistants, and then we continuously have to provide that professional development, and we do not have that continuous, um, intervention for our students. So that's where we're looking at, um, adding those at, um, our elementary schools. And currently, as I said, we have, currently have reading intervention teacher at our Orchard Park, so this would be additional 10 teachers at our other 10 elementary schools that we're looking at. So why would we want to do this? Why, why would that be, um, important? Well, when, as we look at the, um, the coaching aspect of it, and what, the work that our instructional, um, specialists do, on your, um, table, you have a handout that says, "Why Coach?", and this, um, this slide summarizes those pieces. But as we look at, this is the work of Joyce and Showers, and they have done, um, work on best practices in professional development and what's the impact of that professional development on the, the instruction in the classroom? And on your, um, chart you have here, as you look at, you have your different training components, so you have your, um, giving of information, just giving of theory, demonstration, theory and demonstration, theory and practice, um, theory, demonstration, and practice. And then you look at your effect size, your effect size on knowledge, your effect size on the skill of the instructor, and then also the effect size on the transfer of the training, or the effect size of it moving into practice. And at the bottom of your chart, you can see, it's not until you get to the theory, demonstration, practice, feedback, and coaching, do you have a positive effect size, effect size on the transfer into the classroom, the transfer into the instruction. And a 1.68 effect size may seem small, but in education, when you look at effect size, that is a very large effect size where you will have, that will transfer then to that student achievement piece. So as we look at the coaching and, um, as we look at the, um, the model that we've had in place over the last six years with our coaches, it really has been a very effective for our teachers. And then also, as we look at what's the effect on our student achievement as well, you can see from the research, we are supporting that best practice there. And the, as we look at this model, you can see there's a di, difference between the, just the training, the method, how do you train? And you don't really start to have the doing part until you get into the feedback and into that coaching piece. So it's the difference between knowing, knowing what is the best practices to do, and then actually implementing those into the classroom and doing. And that comes in when we get moved to that feedback piece and to the, um, coaching piece. When we think about the cost of these positions, and again, a strategic plan is to really look at what are those priorities and how do we allocate those? These positions that we're, that we're talking about now are all teaching positions. So as you look at, um, the range, a new teaching position, if these were all to be new positions, would be from the range from 55,000 to 70,000, depending on where that teacher, um, might come in. Many times we, when we've had our other instructional, um, specialists, they are, they're not a brand-new teacher, they're midway in, but then we hire a brand-new teacher to replace them. So in the beginning, the cost may be a little bit less, but as they move through or what have you, the cost is a little bit more so on. If you're looking at the cost, you know, a rule of thumb would be, as I talked with Mr. McMichael, about 70,000 a position if we're on the high side. However, these may not necessarily be brand-new positions. They may be reallocated from different positions. And that's really, as we look at and determine, is this a priority? Then how do we make that happen? It may not just be because as we know, you know, money's not growing on trees. So how, what do we reallocate? What might we, this position may not be filled, and we may fill it with a coaching position, or this posi, another position may not be filled, and we may look at a reading intervention position. So those are things that we'll have to really look at to determine, is this a place where we need to go? Okay. So as we move into our strategic plan, our second sub-goal is to fully engage students in learning. And, uh, the first strategy under there is to utilize the Gradual Release of Responsibility Framework for Instruction. And this, uh, the, as you'll know, the Gradual Release of Responsibility Framework is really a way to, um, move our students to that self-directed learning, to really move our students to, um, taking that responsibility. It's not where the teacher is saying, "Here you go, here's the assignment, you're on your own", but it's really, um, moving it from where the teacher's not doing all the work, it's where the, they're putting the work on the students and their learning and they're asking those inquiry questions, and they're moving forward with that piece. We had 41 different professional development opportunities related to the Gradual Release with a total of 132 hours. And we also have the Gradual Release Framework very specifically explicit in our curriculum maps that we currently have, um, completed. So we're looking at, here are the materials that you might use as, when you look at that whole group, or here are the materials you might use as you work on practicing or modeling. Here's materials the student might use on, at an independent level. So those materi, the Gradual Release is very clear in those curriculum maps as well to make, um, the resources very accessible for teachers. And so again, we want to continue, um, to provide that professional development also, and also to, um, monitor the utilization. And then when we look at the impact again on instruction, um, you know, some of the, the pieces as our teachers in their exit slips looked at is, you know, helping to really manage that instruction so they can have that small group, um, in, instruction going on. Really, um, helping the students to take that, become more focused in making their choices, and really looking at the, um, different, um, goals, the individualized goals in the CAFE model, and helping students to look at, okay, here's where this student is now individually, and this is where we're moving that student forward. And these are, in the, in this model, this is one way, as we talked back in our November workshop, as we talked about, how do we differentiate for all of our students in the classroom? We're looking at what models look, what, what classroom practices do we put in place? And one of those is the Gradual Release that helps us to truly differentiate for those students, so we have a variety of whole group, um, guided practice, collaborative practice, and then individualized practice, so the student moves continuously with less and less support. And our next strategy is design and provide rigorous and responsive program study for our students. And again, one of those pieces, looking at our counselor and student services program evaluation, implementing those co-teaching models. And then also, um, eh, back in September, I believe, the board, September or October, the board, um, adopted several new rigorous courses at the high school. And we have a process at the high school that we all, continuously each year, we look at what are those new courses and how do they, how do they align with our goals? And we provide, and, um, I presented to you a couple months ago, some very rigorous courses that we added at the high school. So one of our next steps is to really look at, what do our course offerings look like at the middle school? Currently, we do not have a formalized process because we want to make sure that we're systematic and systemic, and we have, we provide that guaranteed viable curriculum at Creekside as the same we would at Clay Middle School. But looking at what, what might, um, some of those programs might look like? For example, one to investigate, um, currently at the high school, we have Project Lead the Way in our industrial technology program. It's a very rigorous national curriculum that provides, um, a hands-on, very high level where the students in, at one of our expeditions, you have the opportunity to meet one of our Project Lead the Way teachers and learn more about that. Well, they have a middle school program. Is that something that might be, um, provide some really rigorous instruction for our students in a very hands-on manner? Looking also at the middle school, currently, we have, um, advanced math, honors math, we have honors English that we offer. And as we think about math and sciences, looking at science inquiry, doing more of an advanced science for students that really have a love of the sciences. Is that something that might provide a more rigorous curriculum? So really, coming up with a model that we can investigate as a team for all three middle schools and to, and to make recommendations to make sure that we're providing those rigorous courses. And so that's where, that is the next step that we're looking at in our middle school, um, curriculum. Okay. Again, um, another strategy is to use technology and digital media as a tool, um, for learning. And in progress currently, this is data, as you can imagine, um, as we look at our data, we have, um, technology and digital media being used throughout the district. As you can see from the logins from my CCS, which as we're, we're looking at all users, we're looking at student users, teacher user, parent users, um, also Google Docs. We're working with Google Docs is a form of collaboration for our students where they collaborate with each other. Moodle is another, um, piece that I know, Kathy was sharing, they're using that at Butler as well this, this afternoon. But Moodle is another way- But Moodle is another way for our students to collaborate with each other, to collaborate with their teacher as well. Edmodo is an educational format that our high school teachers use, and it's a form of, it's an educational type of Facebook. It gives the opportunity, again, for that collaboration. TCI, EDM, Everyday Math, TCI is our elementary social studies program, where they have some really engaging online components that you can see our students are using. And Everyday Math, again, is another one of our elementary math programs that has some very engaging online pieces, and the students not only can use this at school, but also at home, in both of these cases. Alex is an online math program that we use with our resource students, we use with our intervention students, we use from third grade on up through high school. And this is a program that really is self-paced, students are assessed, and they have the opportunity to learn the material and practice it. And then really, the nice thing about Alex is it aligns with our current textbooks that we have, so it aligns with our Everyday Math, it aligns with our big ideas that we have at the high school. And so that, when we're looking at that intervention, it truly is braided together, the intervention from what they're learning in the classroom, and then what they're also having opportunity to have an alternative practice. Safari is one of our databases that we have that provides a variety of resources for students. It has small clips, media clips, it has different variety of text, electronic texts for the students on different topics, and you can see that we are using that. We also have our iPad initiative that we're using with our SLP, our Life Skills, our FIPS, and our FAP. So those are pieces that, as we're looking at that technology, those are just some examples of how we're using that. And again, we want to continue that through our job-embedded professional development, and then also the use of technology in RISE. Looking at, as we look at this strategy, allocating those resources to look at, making sure we have the tools and the materials and the professional development to support that. And as you can see, we have, as I move back, hold on. As we look at, for the engaging students, we have a total of 314 professional development, and that, that's our overall pieces. And so we want to continue to provide that professional development. So as we look at Subgoal Three, Subgoal Three is to use technology as a tool for learning, productivity, communication, and data solutions. A couple of months ago, Mrs. Cloud and Mr. Howe came and shared more, very in-depth, about the technology pieces, and to really look at what that entails. Our first strategy is to develop and clearly communicate staff and student expectations for the use of technology. And some of the progress that we've made on this, we have our acceptable use policy, where we had everybody complete that online, so we have an up-to-date acceptable use policy. And the beauty of completing that online, where parents had to go in and complete it, the students did not have access to the computers until it was completed. In the past, it was, we were collecting them, and then it was a, kind of a nightmare trying to figure out, okay, who has not done it? Well, this time, you, you just didn't have access. And we did get those completed online, it was a little bit difficult in the beginning, but we got it done with that, with the great help of everybody working together. And another piece is developing digital citizen modules. And when we look at the digital citizen modules, these are modules that have been developed that, in our next steps, will train all staff and also all students, and it's on the proper use of technology. And it ranges everything from social media, using social media, copyright, and how do you use technology, how do you pool pieces, what is, what are those copyright laws, to make sure that we're using that technology correctly? Also, when we talk about SIPA and COPA, those are policies from different technology pieces of software. For example, oh, the software Dr. Swenson, you use all the time with the...
Prezi.
Prezi. Prezi is one of their, one of their policies in Prezi is that you need to be at least 13 years old to use that. So that is something that our elementary students are not able to use, and that's something we need to make sure that our teachers are aware of that, because it is a very neat tool, but we have to make sure that we're abiding by the policies in the software agreements. And we have to make sure that they're aware of those, and how, and how do they figure those out, why is they're coming through? So that's, that's a piece that we want to make sure that our staff understands, and we want to make sure that our students also understand. So our next step is to make sure we're training all of our staff and our students on our digital citizen modules. And then also, looking at, one of the pieces, as we looked at, we want to make sure we have very clear expectations of technology use. So if we want to have all, you know, communicate with technology using a webpage, do we have very clear expectations that teachers will have a webpage? And what needs to be on that webpage, so that we have that consistent, that use of being able to communicate? And so how might we develop that document of those expectations in the, in the technology use? Okay. And another strategy is to look at the infrastructure, make sure that we have the resources available to support the technology, the infrastructure. And Kristy shared with you, we increased our bandwidth, and we're also working on our switch upgrades. And switches are tools that we have in the buildings that make all of our computers run. And they are very expensive, when we talk about these switches. I don't really know what they do, other than they're switches and they're expensive. And Kristy says, "Okay, we're updating switches now, and it takes everything down as they're doing it." That's my extent. But, and our next step is, we want to increase our network capacity, and then we also want to continue our switch upgrade. Just over the break at Mohawk Trails, we did a switch upgrade, and we tried to do that over a winter break, we tried to do it over spring break, because everything does have to come down in the building. And so we're continuing that switch upgrade. Also, looking at providing, now we have the infrastructure, we want to make sure that we have the tools so that our staff, our students can use that technology. And as, you know, some of the things in progress, again, our iPad initiative, looking at our four-year replacement with our technology. In all of our classrooms, we have projectors, we have document cameras. In our elementary classrooms, we have our sound enhancement systems. We also have added, over the last year, additional computer labs and laptop labs in our elementary buildings. And also, we continue to enhance our Pinnacle tools. One of the newest enhancements they've looked at is, we're very fortunate that we have one of our developers here on site, Nick Shudders, who understands the workings of Pinnacle, and one of the things he just enhanced that we're just ready to roll out to our administrators yet this week, is the Pinnacle with the SFS data, or the, so our RISE data, which will be easily accessible in Pinnacle, so it gives you, again, one platform. And we'll, we continue to do that. One of the things that, next steps, is to investigate an iPad management solution, because this, you know, it's not as easy as having your iPad at home and you download these apps. But when you're looking at a school setting, and you're looking at multiple students using the iPads, it's how do you manage, how are those apps purchased? And the State Board of Accounts has very specific regulations on how you can purchase those, and then also, how do you make sure that the apps that you purchased are on there, and there's not other apps that are being downloaded that should not be on those? And so they're, and they have solutions out there that come at a cost, but that's one thing that our team is investigating. And then also, another piece that we started working on today is updating our corporation technology plan, and then continuing that to having all of our schools to update their technology plan. The technology plan I shared with you at our summer retreat, our board summer retreat, it was in really teeny-tiny letters and very difficult to read, but it's a three-year plan that we developed at the district level, and then our schools developed that three-year plan modeled after ours. And our technology plan, as you can imagine, will very much align with our strategic plan, because we want to make sure that we're putting all of the arrows in the same direction. Another strategy is engaging the students in the technology. And again, this is a piece that is very similar, as our strategic plan is braided together from our different strategies, as you saw when we first presented this, the different sub-goals do relate with each other. So this is very similar to the one we had in the student engagement piece. And then using technology to enhance communication with stakeholders. Again, we have, we're very fortunate, one of the pieces, the school messenger, where we have, it can send out emails, it can send out phone calls to our stakeholders. Another piece that we worked on is with our friends at the Carmel Clay Public Library. Just recently, we worked with them, and our, Leslie Carpiak, one of our instructional specialists, she went over to work with the employees at the Carmel Clay Public Library to help them to understand my CCS, help them to understand our databases that we have, so that they can better support our students and our families when they come into the public library. Because that is, you know, we do have a very strong partnership with our library friends, and we, many, we share a lot of the same stakeholders, and so we want to make sure we continue that. Some of the next steps in our communication is, we want to deploy a mobile my CCS, so when you're out to dinner and you're asking your kids how their grades are, you can easily pull it up on your phone. And in my case, sometimes I don't want to do that, no. But that's one tool that we're moving to deploy, also to continue that professional development, and also make sure we're enhancing our webpage and continuing those updates. And another one of our strategies is to really look at using technology to increase productivity. And, you know, some of the highlights here is looking at utilization of Google Docs for collaboration. As I said, we're using that in the classroom, and we're also using that as a tool, as collaboration among teachers, and so they're at a variety of different buildings, they can collaborate on that document, they can share their ideas, and you can see the different ideas that come through with the Google Docs. Another piece for productivity, obviously, we need to make sure we have a safe and secure environment, so that all of our students and our staff can be productive. With our technology, we've looked at, we have security cameras, and we're work, we have door locking systems in several of our schools, and we will continue next steps of making sure that we have door locking systems in all of our schools. And that is high on everybody's priority now, as we look at that security. It's always been high on Carmel Clay Schools' priority to make sure that we are providing that safe and secure environment, and what does that technology need to enhance that? And then, we also want to make sure that we allocate those resources. Some of the progress that we've made, we reinstated a help desk position. This is a position we, in the past, we had a help desk position that we did not fill, but we really found with the, my CCS, with parents that need help, with, you know, staff members that can call in to get help, students, that, that really enhances our technology. And so that person is available to not only parents, but also to staff, to provide that ongoing technology use. And as I mentioned earlier, we continue to enhance our Pinnacle tool. Another piece too, is we customize our tools that we have. Power School is one of our tools that we adopted a couple of years ago, is our student management system. And we continue to customize that based on the needs of our teachers, based on, you know, we need to pull this data, so we are very fortunate, again, that Nick Shudders is able to customize that and make them all talk to each other, so all of our systems work together. And so we want to make sure that we continue to assess our needs and develop those creative solutions in this area. So that concludes my update. What questions can I answer for you?
I have a couple of questions. Can you give me an idea, you were talking about the balanced calendar, can you give me an idea of different balanced calendars that you're possibly looking at, dates when the students might be in school, when they might be looking at being out of school, would it be August, July?
No.
Yeah.
No, my short answer. But as, as we look at investigating that, it's really, as, Dr. Dillon is going to work and pull together a cog to just start exploring that, so it's in the very early stages. And is that even something that, really, as we look at, is that, does the research support that? Is that what is really best for our students? Because again, we want to keep in mind, it's, we want to do every, all of our decisions that we make, we want to make in what is best for our students' learning. So that is a next step, but that's not anything that, you know, I've started to discuss, but I'm sure Mr. Dillon will have some ideas, Dr. Dillon will have ideas later on.
Another question, well, it's not a question, it's just, I'm wondering if we're ever going to have a CCS app?
As far as...
As like, you can just put CCS on your, on your phone or your iPad, and then just click on it, and you're in?
Well, with my CCS, the mobile app, yes.
That's what it will be, it will be an app?
Yes. So you could actually be in your board docs right from your phone.
Sure enough.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Another question. Mr. Phillips?
I'd like to say it's gratifying to see how far we've come with this strategic planning effort. I mean, it's just a tremendous amount of work and thinking, and by the way, I think it gives all of us an unparalleled opportunity to look into the inner workings of how this district really tries to get better. So I'm very happy to see what we've done so far. I thought I was going to hear something about Bring Your Own Device. There was a mention in an earlier presentation about that. Is that, is that BYOD thing still a part of the scene?
Yes. And as we continue to look at the infrastructure to support those devices, and as we look at the application of what that might look like, that is something that, yes, is still on our radar.
Okay.
But it's really, first of all, we're looking at using, you know, we pulled some data not too long ago, to really look at, are we using the tools we currently have? And what we found is, we have many people bringing their own device, where, because when we look at, at the high school, for example, when students are not in the building, the number of guest devices, because when our teachers come, they have their cellphones or their iPads on the system. But then we also see a surge when students are in the building, and then when the students leave the building, we see a decline. So we already have, we're looking at, we're bringing that in many different cases, but the next step is, okay, you have this device, how will you use that for instruction? What are the best ways to use that tool to really enhance the learning of our students? And so that, that's a piece that continues with that professional development. And we have some examples of that. I was at the high school not too long ago, where they were using their cameras, and they were actually out looking at an art exhibit out in one of our halls, and then they were taking that back and tying it into the course, and how does that tie into the history that they were studying at the time? So it was, you know, a really interesting piece of how they use that, and that, at a very high level of that, analyzing that piece, and then how would it tie into their piece of histories? So, but looking at, that continues with that ongoing.
Very impressive. And just a general comment, I would love to see sometime, somehow, a demonstration of some of these technological tools. We've got Edmodo, and EDM, and Alex, you know, it's good to hear about them, but as your chart suggested, be, you know, the next step in my awareness to actually see a demonstration somehow, sometime.
Sure, sure. Yes, we can do that at one of our future workshops.
Great. Well, thank you again for an excellent job.
Thanks.
I have no question, I just want to thank you, this was very thorough and a great update. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
I just didn't want my opportunity to pass by there.
What? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that's okay. I ask another question?
Sure.
Early in the presentation, you talked about standards that you still have to write, like, oh, way back...
Curriculum?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
There. Like industrial tech, business, family, and consumer science. Are there Common Core standards to go with those particular areas at this time, or are they still being developed?
The, we have Common Core literacy standards that tie into the technical subjects, so that would include our math, science, industrial technology, family, consumer science, and we also have literacy standards that tie into the humanities pieces, so the social studies, history, the Common Core standards that support that, that information literacy piece. So there are those pieces. There, the Common Core state standards, they are developing those also for the other content areas, but those have not been out and implemented yet. So as we look at developing, you know, as it falls in our science, we would look at our science, you know, right now, if there's not science Common Core standards... our science, you know, right now, if there's not science Common Core standards, we would take those literacy standards and how they tie into our science and also our content, our science content standards.
So right now, it all, it's all based back on literacy?
Correct.
So it's, it's not necessarily content as related to science?
Correct. It's in how do you use that information literacy? So reading in the science area to support the learning of science. So you combine the Indiana Content Standards, which are our science standards, with the Common Core, but they are very specific for technical subjects. So it is very specific on reading, technical pieces, you know, so science textbooks, science research, those pieces, and how, how do you implement that into the curriculum?
Okay, because I know an I-Step, you know, I-Step used to, or at this point still does, test specific science skills, not just how do you get the science method, you know?
Correct. And as now, you know, as we go out, currently, the way it is set up in the year 2014, 15, that's when our literacy and our math will be assessed using a Common Core assessment. Now, does that still mean we will continue with science, with social studies? And I, we don't know at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you as well, but I also have just one quick question. As we're reading through that, the digital citizen, which you touched on that, a couple of questions that I had related to that. With, with proper use of technology, does this comply then with the E-rate and some of these other standards? And then are we teaching this across the board? Is that required for each grade level or is it just elementary or how? Could you just touch on the digital citizen?
Exactly. The digital citizen piece is a requirement for our E-rate to make sure. An E-rate is our, it's a government plan that we have that we get a very, reduce costs when we comply with certain regulations. And one of them is making sure that we are educating all of our students and all of our staff on the digital citizen, the proper use of technology. And so we are using this in kindergarten through 12th grade. The way we're rolling it out this year in our elementary schools is it's through our computer lab and they are very, what they created is really engaging modules that include clips of videos, clips of different interactive pieces where the students interact with each other. Through our middle school, we're including that in our wellness, health curriculum pieces. So really, it's over throughout the year. And then at the high school, again, we're, we're including that with our high school to make sure that we get every student, we're including that in, at some point, looking through ninth through 12th grade. So it would be those modules interspersed in a variety of ways. It may be through SRT time or what have you. But we want to make sure that we do educate all of students and we want to make sure that we continue to educate them.
Thank you very much. I know the board was very excited to have this come up as one of our workshop topics and you did an exceptional job. So thank you very much. And any board members have any other comments or questions for this evening? Fantastic. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening and I think our, our fellow educators for supporting our school system. And with that, meeting is adjourned.